Good afternoon. This is the special meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Friday, June 17th, 2022. Welcome to the meeting. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, will you please take role?
Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Katz?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Gallegos? Okay, we have quorum.
Thank you. Please, wherever you're at, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. All right. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the commission? Please know that you have three minutes to speak.
We have one person, Danny. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I'm calling in in regards to Agenda Two, I think. So first of all, hello, my name is Danny Vega. I'm a resident of War Three. I'm calling to show my support for local artist Kimberly Duran. I've been following Kimberly's work for some time now, and I have to say that it's absolutely amazing. I'll admit that I never really cared for art. It was just something I was never into, but seeing some of Kimberly's work has really opened me up to that artistic world. And now I have not only a higher appreciation for art, but for artists as well, and how their work can truly inspire others. Kimberly is someone who is selfless and wants nothing more but to bring happiness to her neighbors through her art. I think Santa Ana would benefit a lot if we could see more of Kimberly's work. I just want to add that one of my personal favorites is a piece that she did at Los Dorados Restaurant by Fairview and Edinger. Lastly, you know, she's been sharing her work on social media a lot, and I have personally seen her work grow exponentially in popularity. So I humbly ask that this commission consider giving Kimberly the full grant amount so we can all see and appreciate more of her work. Thank you, and I just wanna wish everyone a happy weekend and a happy June theme. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Ramirez. Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hi, my name is John Ramirez, and I'm calling because I want to comment on, I guess, our Agenda Item Two. And anyway, my name is John Ramirez, and I've been a resident here in Santa Ana for 42 years and currently residing in the newly designated War Two. I'm commenting today in support of artist Kimberly Durant and her collective, The Heavy, and her request for funds to support her Myrtle Alley Magic Project. If funded, this project will support more public art exhibition and provide free art supplies to youth in the Pacific Park neighborhood. Kimberly and her collective are very talented artists with their works displayed throughout our city, with their more recent murals displayed at the Fitness Court in Dale High Park and another beautiful mural displayed at the Cross Streets of Hickory and Myrtle Streets in the Pacific Park neighborhood. It is my strong opinion that she and her collective, The Heavy, is a positive for our city and will continue to make our city look beautiful with their amazing and talented work and dedication to expanding and promoting art is admired, respected, and needed in our city, and many residents would strongly agree. Please strongly consider granting funds to her collective to support her project. Thank you. This concludes my comment, and you all have a great weekend.
Thank you. And next, we have Victor Payan. Go ahead, Victor. Victor, if you can unmute yourself so we can speak. Victor, can you hear us? He's not muted.
Yeah.
Perhaps there's technical difficulty.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Should we move ahead? And then if he gets connection, we can pause for that? Or what's the, what's our legal ability, Ryan, guidance?
Yeah, I think the best approach right now is just to let Mr. Payan know that we are not able to hear him, unfortunately. And if he can call back in on another line, maybe use the phone number to call in, and he can make his comments when he's able to reconnect, and then we can, we can move forward until he's able to get a better connection.
Thank you. We'll try one more time because Victor raised his hand. Are you, are you able to speak now, Victor? Can we hear you? All right, then we'll encourage you, Victor, to try a different way of connecting. And when you reconnect, we'll pause to take your comment, and we will proceed with the rest of the agenda. So moving on, this is the time for the commission to consider matters under the Consent Calendar, Item Number One. Do I have a motion to consider Item Number One?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Katz. Do I have a second?
A motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Fernandez. Any comment, any discussion about that item? Then we'll proceed to take a vote. Madam Recording Secretary, would you take a call for the voting?
Sure. Commissioner McNair?
Yes.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. And just for the record, Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Gomez were not able to attend today.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that update. All right, so the matter has been approved by consent. As to our business calendar, we have one item under the Business Calendar, Item Number Two, Investing in the Artist Grant Recommendations for the Fiscal Year 2223. So will staff tram, will you please report on the matter?
Yes, let me share my screen with you. Okay, so as you've already read in your staff report, that, or the staff report that was given to you, that the theme for this year is La Cultura Cura, or for this round of artist grants. I'll just refer to it as artist grants even though it is investing in the artist grant. So just for brevity, I'll call it artist grant. The theme is La Cultura Cura, or Art Heals. And so that was one of the criteria that the artists needed to adhere to in their, in their grant proposal. So what some, the basics that they needed to meet, basic requirements, was apply the theme to their project. It needed to be outdoors. Online events didn't satisfy that requirement. It needs to be outdoors. And they needed to attend one of the mandatory information sessions, and we had offered three. And individual artists, so there was two categories that they could apply under. Individual artists could apply for up to $10,000, and nonprofit 501(c)(3) arts organizations could apply for up to $20,000. Individual artists had to score, their proposals had to score over 65 points, and organizations had to score over 70 points. So here, as you can see on my screen, these are the results. There were, we were able to select, how many applied? Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry. I don't remember total how many applied, but I'm sure we can, oh, yeah, 38. Actually, five more than 30, so 43 applied, but five had to be disqualified for various reasons that I read up. Either they did not meet minimum requirement or didn't attend the information session. So 38 were qualified to apply, and the panel accepted 22 applications, 11 for individual artists and 22, I'm sorry, another 11 for arts organizations. So as you can see, that's the distribution of the scores as well as the funding. Do we have any questions? Before we vote?
Are we, are we just going straight into the ratification of the?
We could, unless you had any questions or anything. And this is, all the scoring was done by outside independent panel. Staff was not involved in the, was not part of the review panel. We organized it, but we did not write.
I have two questions. The first is, did we exhaust all the funds that were available for this?
Yes, sorry, I should have mentioned at the beginning that we had $300,000 funding through ARPA and through Revive Santa Ana. And we were able to give out, distribute $100,000 to individual artists and $200,000 to arts organizations.
And this is Victor. I'm in the meeting now.
I have one more question. I don't know, just, was the presentation today going to include any artifacts from their proposals that we could see to get a sense of how the projects met some of the criteria at all?
No, I did send everybody the description of the proposal. Yeah. Yes, Commissioner Katz.
Well, I tried to go through the criteria. Was there an exclusion for any artists who had received any event sponsorship grants?
No, there's no exclusion. They could still apply. Yeah. Regardless of anybody they had received from the city previously.
And can you give me, is it, is it fair to ask, who were the, the independent panel? Who did that consist of?
There was one commissioner. Most of our panels always include a commissioner, an art and culture commissioner. This, for this particular panel, it was Commissioner Wu. And we also had, let me look it up here. Sorry, let me stop sharing. And let me look up. Okay, so the panelists were, there is Sofia Cuevas. She is the Arts Curriculum Specialist for Santa Ana Unified. Pablo Palacios, who is the art teacher at St. Joseph's High School. Larry Gonzalez, who is an artist and community advocate. And Sonia Batres, who is the Recreation and Community Services Supervisor for Parks Rec. Particularly because we were gonna have, a lot of these events were gonna happen in a park, in a park. And so Parks Rec needed to be involved to assess the feasibility of each of the proposals.
And can you give a little more detail about Ms. Rojas, her project? It, Chocolatton? It just seems to be gather and drink hot chocolate. I'm sure there has to be more to it.
Yeah, I think it's about, part of it is the healing component.
But where's the art component?
Yes. I don't have it up there, applications memorized, so I'm going to have to look it up here.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay.
I want to concur to that comment. I think everything was pretty straightforward, but that one was a little bit different.
Yeah.
Wouldn't culinary be considered arts? Especially since OSHA has a, I believe, I could be correct here, but I believe they have a culinary arts department in their school, and students can focus on that.
So does Santa Ana Unified, has a culinary arts program.
Yeah. Valley High School, right?
If we, if we embrace a broad spectrum of what the arts are and not just think of it as one thing, but we really think contemporary and we think bigger picture, literary arts, culinary arts, yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's a differentiation between serving and trading food, though, right? Yeah, I agree.
In her, in her proposal, she did say that guests will also participate in creating an installation that would be featured at closing event, an exhibit that would take place during Art Walk. So that's the art component. That, I apologize, I didn't include that part in the, in your description.
I, I have a similar kind of approach towards the Tamal Festival.
So what festival, I'm sorry?
The Third Annual Tamal Festival.
A Tamal Festival, yes. Okay, sorry.
What is the healing and the artistic component in that one?
Yes, okay, so I believe Commissioner Wu, who was part of the panel, has, has a comment.
Yes, so these, investing in artist grants were for the Arts and Culture Commission, and so we graded it, and we rated each proposal based on their relevance to both arts and culture. And the healing element was described in detail. I can pull up the specifics for the Tamal Fest, but I believe that one had to do with the economic recovery of the city as the healing component.
You know, I got, I got that component, that, that, that really nicely met that aspect of the grant proposal, but I just didn't get the artistic component. And I appreciate that there is a, there's artistic to the culinary world. It just didn't feel like there was very much artistic to this particular proposal. I think in terms of culinary arts, I think in terms of preparation, the cooking, the plant, the plating, the presentation, there's an art to it. And as Commissioner Hernandez said, this simply seemed to be, we're serving hot chocolate as a really nice compliment or as a nice way to catapult into, to sharing stories about people we've lost. I, I do get that, and there's something about hot chocolate that does it, or any warm drink, but I just didn't get the artistic component here for this one.
I appreciate Commissioner Wu bringing up that it's arts and culture. So thinking about some of the cultural aspects and dimensions that these events can bring, which may not be wholly arts, creating a product, but it's, they're immersed in a process of building culture and healing through that.
A little bit more context as well for Alicia Rojas's proposal. It, she specifically also submitted that it was going to be sharing of collective stories of loved ones lost, which is the cultural and healing aspect of this as well, not to mention the origins, the cultural origins of chocolate within Mexico and Latin America as the other component to the cultural. And as with the Moth Fest, that also has a connection with the culture that was explained in the proposal, we need to.
And storytelling is an art form, too.
In fact, thank you, Chair McNair. I was gonna say, I think there's memories here of events like the Moth Story Hour and, and many other programs that have really gone nationwide and are centered entirely around people gathering together to tell stories. I can't think of the name of the one that airs on Fridays on NPR, for instance, but what a beautiful thing to do. And I hope there's maybe a recording element so that we can capture some of these stories for the Santa Ana History Room, possibly.
One of my dreams for us as a community is to have storytelling festivals and to do exactly what you're saying, because I am a firm believer that art, that we heal through hearing our stories. So I think that is a, and to that end, I hope we have more storytelling festivals.
Well, Commissioner Russell got me with the Moth story. I love that program, and that is, that is wonderful. I think the other program, maybe the Snap Judgment, or is that the other one you were thinking about, or?
It's the one where they go, they go into a capsule, and it's oftentimes about memories of a lot, of one, someone who's lost. It's on Friday mornings, gosh, I can't.
Yeah, anyways, that, that is, that is a good dimension that I had not thought of.
Are there further questions or comments? Sorry, sorry, Commissioner Russell.
I, I wanted to make a comment on the Tamal Festival from an experience. I'm not sure if that's appropriate.
Okay.
I, I just would like to see more of the local participants in, in the Tamal Festival. I felt that there was a little bit of a need for that. Maybe, I don't know if there's specification for that, but I, I wanted, I felt that could be a little bit more authentic.
More what? I'm sorry?
More authentic.
More authentic for the Tamal Festival?
Yes, yes. Including the local vendors, I think is more what I want to say.
I think Victor wants, wanted to speak earlier, and he's one of the recipients, so I don't know if this would be an appropriate time for him to speak. Oh, yes.
Thinking that, that we wouldn't have public comments about this item, because that's not, we're not supposed to do that. I was thinking that we talk through this process. We take a vote or move toward whatever we do. And then after we complete this item, we'll take his public comment.
Okay.
Chair McNair, if I may just throw in there, I, I think his comments might impact or influence this matter. I'm not sure, but he would have had an opportunity to speak prior to the commission hearing this item, and so we, we were kind of giving him an opportunity to come back in due to the technical difficulties.
Fair enough. Okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, Ryan. So then we should go ahead and take Victor's comment. Go ahead, Victor.
Victor, can you hear us? Go ahead.
By phone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm, yeah, I'm calling in by phone. For some reason, my browser wouldn't accept the microphone. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak. A couple of things I wanted to say was that our, well, I'm gonna talk about this, the grant, but also just to start saying that our Smart Walk program that was funded by the previous grant is happening on June 25th at the OC Musicians Union, invite everybody from 11 to 5. We have some great participants. We have Micro Center, who's gonna be doing 3D printing, and they are hiring. World Beat Center is coming up from San Diego. We've got the Santa Ana Public Library, Santa Ana College Drone Program. We'll be presenting, the Musicians Union will be presenting. We'll have augmented reality artwork on South Main, Smart South Main Art Retail and Technology. So go to masamedia.org for more information, but we thank the city for their participation. We look forward to a wonderful event. And regarding this program, I just wanted to say, I'm a little surprised at our score, to be honest, because I think we had a very strong program which addressed a lot of the issues and needs that you're talking about, this organization that, or this doing hot chocolate is. But our proposal was to bring Danny Trejo, was to show a documentary, have a signing, have a community dialogue, and address healings of, regarding incarceration, substance abuse, and things that are really heavy on this community. So like I said, I would like to, you know, get some, the panel comments to see why we may not have scored as highly as some of the others. But I also want to say that when you have a program like this, especially with this kind of money, you should really, and the panel should really look for projects that push the envelope, that expand capacity, that expand access to, to things that aren't already happening. And I'm just like, like I said, not knowing what the projects were, just seeing that the first one that you're discussing, or the first two, it's, you know, again, I think you have a very valid discussion regarding the artistic rigor and components of this, because I know that we went up to a lot of effort to hit all the marks on what this grant was requesting, and therefore, like I said, I'm just curious to see as why we might have scored so, so high, or so low based on what the grant was looking for. We feel that we were providing exactly what the program was asking for. And Danny Trejo in this community would have been revolutionary. And, you know, we were also talking about courting his Trejo tacos to come to Santa Ana. So like I said, just curious to see what the panel said and, and to ask the commission just to understand that, you know, that giving up this kind of money, we really should be pushing the envelope of, of, of access and artistic rigor. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Any comments from, or questions to staff?
Yeah. I want to echo some of the comments that were made by the public. Resolving the comment that was just made, it was interesting and thought provoking. But some of the comments about Kimberly Durant, I want to echo. I, I was lucky enough, or I, or my neighbor who was a recipient of a modest grant, maybe six, seven months ago. It was at Randac Chair Public Art Piece, and I, once I got the grant, I went out looking for artists. And one of the first ones I came upon was Kimberly Durant. And one, she selflessly gave him for herself, her time, her talent, and contributed, she and her partner Bud Herrera contributed a chair to the exhibit, which was wonderful. But she also helped me get in touch with other artists in Santa Ana. A number of them were Vietnamese, because I was trying to be as diverse as possible in this exhibit. And I just, I think we need more people, more artists like Kim Durant functioning in Santa Ana will really help make our arts culture that more accessible. So I echo some of those comments that were made earlier in the session. I also want to recognize Sandra Sarmiento. There was one person who was up for a proposal, who was a resident at the Arts Collective, and I have no issues with the grading on it, but I know Sandra Sarmiento has a program going on there at the Arts Collective. And to the extent we can embrace that collective more and see it succeed, it really can be a wonderful example of how low-income housing can really work here in our city in a very successful public way. And I know Sandra's program that she has going on there for media education, and one of the artists have proposed something here. Yeah, again, I'm not quipping at all with the, the grading that was done. I think it was appropriate, but I do want to recognize that program that's going on there, and I hope it can succeed in the extent as the commission can support it. I'd like to see that happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Wu?
Yes, I just wanted to give a little bit more context as well for the, the process for the reviewing of the proposals. So each panelist was given about a month to review every one of the proposals. I believe there were 40 in total that we ended up looking at in detail on our own. And then we met together, and over the course of six and a half to seven hours, eight hours actually, because we had another hour added on at the end of the day, we discussed each and every single application, our reasoning for every single proposal, including strengths to each proposal as well as things that can be improved. And that is, that has been documented, and every single person who did apply can request that feedback to strengthen their proposals for the following years. And I encourage anyone who applied, whether or not you received the grant amount you wished or whether you didn't, to reach out to get that feedback so you understand exactly the panel's rationale behind scoring all the proposals the way that we did. And after, only after we scored everything did we finally sit down to allocate funds. And that was done through a collective discussion through, over the course of about an hour as well.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
I just want to express my gratitude for, you know, the depth and seriousness with which the panel, you know, took this process and really invested in understanding how it met the criteria. So thank you. So thank you, Commissioner Wu, on behalf of the entire panel.
Yes, and I want to echo that, Commissioner Russell, and thank all the people that applied for the artists that took their time and and energy, the organizations and how much there is. And it's very exciting and I hope we can continue to expand our granting opportunities and give people more opportunities, because there's some really amazing, exciting things cooking out there. So thank you to the work of those on the panel and thank you to all the artists and organizations that applied. And I wish we could fund everything. Unfortunately, it doesn't get to work that way. So, all right, well, then do I have a motion to approve item number two, investing in the artist grant recommendations for the fiscal year? And I want to say too, I thank the panel, because I trust their work. So thank you. So do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Katz. And do I have a second?
I have seconds.
Commissioner Russell, thank you for your second. All right. Madam Recording Secretary, would you take the vote call, please?
Commissioner McNair?
Yes.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Then we have concluded item number two and we're on to staff member comments. So Tram, any comments for our?
Yes, I would just continue with the artist grants. Some of you are new to this. I'll pitch it out to share with you what are the next steps. You're probably wondering after we vote on this and now it's passed. So you approved the panelists' recommendations. Next, we're going to draft, staff will draft agreements and submit it to legal. And and then we will also send out emails informing all the applicants, applicants of their status, whether they've been accepted or not. And then also for those who have been granted funds, they have to now become, if they're not already, become a vendor of the city. So they have to fill out all that vendor paperwork, including insurance. That's been ongoing for these past two years. And then Gabriela and I will be scheduling one-on-one sessions with each of the applicants who, or each of the grantees, to go over all the, all the stuff that they need to turn in and what, you know, what their timeline is, what their budget is, all of that. So we try to be very, very thorough and it can be very overwhelming for some of them in case some of them talk to you, know that. But, you know, but then it lays it out, because it is a lot of process, you know, to go through. But to make sure that it's 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 done well. Okay, then moving on to projects.
Is there any chance that you'll be putting that in writing for us?
Yeah, I could said, well, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, or I can send you a sample of the email that I usually send out to them. And so that, yeah. And we are continuing to develop the art, the request for proposals for the parking structure murals as well and and include the survey component for that, as well as the memorial, the COVID memorial slash tribute. With the South Main Panel actually reviewing the applications. And there were over 400 submissions that qualified, you know, for, so it was like 405. Oh, I'm sorry, 205, 205 submissions for the South Main application. So that is now, I'm there, city's sifting through that and you'll hear another report in about a month or so. And and we're developing an RFP for a new program that was commissioned by City Council. It's, I'm telling you this a little early and we have not released it yet, but it's the graffiti art program or gap program. And we're releasing RFP to search for partnering orgs for programming gap. And then finally, of course, we're always gonna, we're still for the next year, we're going to, we're working on the Arts Economic Prosperity Six Reports Study, which I believe Chairman there will go into more details or just more comments on that later. That's it for me.
Thank you so much. Does the commission have any comments they wish to share? Please note that no member may speak more than once until everybody else has had an opportunity to speak. And also, please limit your comments to three minutes.
I have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Fernandez, and then I think I saw Commissioner Katz have his hand raised. So go ahead.
I just want to say that it's exciting to see music be included in some of these grants. I think music is very special, including visual arts. But I think that San Ana as a city has become a highly desirable place to be when it comes to music. So it is exciting to see these music programs move forward as well as everything else that we're doing.
So first of all, I want to say I thought the diversity of the programs that were put up for this grant were were really unique and astounding. And I I I trust will have a really strong publication around this, so everybody knows, the entire city knows and can come celebrate some of these festivals or or events that happen, because they're really interesting opportunities to share cultures. I also want to give a shout out to the Theater Arts Program at San Ana High School for winning a number of Macy's at for their production of In the Heights. Our neighborhood Floral Park will be celebrating that. I think a number of their actors and actresses will be coming and doing a medley of their their showstoppers at our Freedom Fest, which is our July 4th celebration, which occurs on July 2nd. You're all invited to come as well. And and I do want to give a shout out as well. And and I hope everybody goes out and attends the San Ana Juneteenth Celebration, which is on Saturday, not Juneteenth. But this is, this is not simply an African American celebration. It is an American celebration. It's a significant day in the history of our country and really warrants being celebrated by all of us. So I hope to see all, each of you there.
We'll actually be performing.
Right.
Commissioner Russell, it looks like you were ready.
Yes, I just want to encourage all of the commissioners, especially if you are newer to the commission, to speak with your city council representative or council member about trying to make sure that the arts are funded on a more permanent basis. We have an opportunity here, the budget approval, I believe, is on Tuesday, the 21st. I'm correct? And if you need any arguments to help bolster your case, Commissioner Wu and I published a piece in the Voice of OC that I encourage you all to read about how instrumental the funding, this infusion, recent infusion of funding was to really make sure that we had that equitable access to the arts that one of the public commenters spoke about earlier, to ensure that the arts wasn't just happening in downtown. Though we do love to celebrate, you know, with our historic buildings and in our corridors, but really to make sure that it was made accessible to families and people in neighborhoods all across the city and in all different kinds of celebrations. So please read that and please share and urge your council member to consider the arts as they finalize the budget. And happy Father's Day and happy Juneteenth.
Thank you. Any other, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Wu.
Yes, I'd like to echo what everyone's saying about thanking all of the applicants to the artist grant, individuals and organizations alike, who really put a lot of time and hard work into these applications, many of which were extremely thorough and detailed. I encourage everyone to watch out for the next round of these applications and continue to apply. It was a joy to be able to see these funds get allocated to local arts organizations and artists. And also want to echo what Commissioner Russell shared about encouraging everyone to get involved in making sure that the arts and culture in the city continue to be funded on a as permanent as possible basis. And to come to not only these commissioner meetings, but also to city council meetings and budget discussions to advocate directly with city council members as well. And beyond that, I also want to note that, thank you staff for making sure that the live stream is working. I've had a couple of comments sharing excitement that we were able to watch on YouTube. And is it happy long weekend for everyone? And I hope we all enjoy the beginning of summer.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everyone's comments and underscoring what Commissioner Russell said. And thank you to Commissioner Wu and Commissioner Russell for doing that advocacy article. Like our work and advocacy is huge and it has to go on all the time. And to that end of having sustainable funding and ongoing budget, Tram and I collaborated to host a meeting, which I I think I saw Commissioner Russell there, where we invited all the arts and culture organizations, institutions and individuals to come to an information session to get, to learn how to capture data from their events that is going to help us understand the economic impact of the arts on our city. That's data that we can take to the city council to show what it is that we need to support and sustain and how much of a viable economic engine that the arts are in our community. So it's really important that you continue, you out watching all the arts organizations to please capture data, surveys from your events that are going on. All the people that just were awarded the grants, please, when you get those, make this an integral part of your, what's happening. And also those of you who were given sponsorships, we want to capture data from those events. Pardon me. We also hosted a follow-up information session just this past week for anybody who had questions or concerns, wanted additional help. And then I know that Tram is sending out information to all the individuals and following up and asking them personally to please get captured data. So as a commission, I encourage all of us to, A, tell everyone as possible and everybody, if you're doing an event or anyone you know doing events, to get these surveys and get the information. Tram will be happy to provide that for you. And B, we need to attend events. And if there's any way, as a commissioner, you can go to something and help an organization capture survey data or just be there and support. Let's divvy up those opportunities. The other thing I want to share is, mark your calendars, July 7th and 8th, I think, 6, 7th and 8th. We have two big community free events in the school district. One is a production of Beauty and the Beast presented by high school students. It will be at Santa Ana High School. It's not just Santa Ana High School, but students, though, although they are fabulous. It is a collection of premier actors, musicians, dancers, singers from all over the district. And it's a big, huge collaboration with a big investment from the district to create this free public event for families and community at large. So we really want you to come. You can find that information on our, at SA USC Arts, and I will send flyers to Tram so she can send them out. The other one is Annie Junior, which is going to be, which is three through, third grade through eighth grade students. And that's going to be at Seager Shroom High School and they have overlapping windows of those events. So I really strongly encourage you to come, support our kiddos and their arts endeavors as they learn and grow and thrive in our arts community and be part of the whole pipeline. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate, appreciate the comments. Was there any final things before we conclude this meeting? Okay, so page two. So this meeting is officially adjourned. Our next special meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 21st at 5:30 PM in the council chamber. So have a great month and we look forward to seeing you next time. Bye.
Bye bye.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.